You're good, Dave. We're all here.
Okay, oh, okay, great. Thank you. So we were ready to call the meeting to order?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So it being 6:00 PM on February 12th, calling the RMLD Board of Commissioners Board Meeting to Order. And any other housekeeping, like who's remote and who's not? I'm remote. Looks like Pam and Bob are remote.
Yeah, I'm remote.
Great.
And Vivek's here as liaison for C E D.
Thank you. Okay, so I don't think there's public comment or anything else, right, to be done?
Correct.
Okay, so we have, we have two items on the agenda tonight, and you know, just if we're ready to go to the first one, the, the table setting for this one is that, keeping an eye on the GM employment contract, it states that if, if the RMLD Board determines at any time that the performance of the GM is less than satisfactory, it shall provide to him in writing a specific list of performance deficiencies and the actions which the RMLD Board believes the employee may take to improve performance to a satisfactory level within a six-month period. So if, if there are things that, based on the recent meeting, there were some things that seem to fall in that category, and if there are, then this is something that we're required to do. It's not optional. We have to develop such a list and the actions. And, you know, if we don't do this, then we're not doing our job under the contract and perhaps not protecting RMLD. So during, during the recent meeting, there was a lot of comments. We're familiar with these topics that we're, they'll recover. There's really nothing new about them, but we haven't done kind of the compilation that would be required if, if we felt this way. And since we're also about to take a vote on the, the 2025 goals, then if we do have such items, then this is a logical time in the sequence to get this done and get those comments and action points, you know, you know, in front of everybody so that they can feed into the goals that we're about to improve. So I guess the, the first kind of straw poll, if you will, is whether, you know, we feel as a body that there are concerns that reach the level of things that were less than satisfactory. So I think that's kind of the first cut at this, and I guess I would just ask, do we have that sense in the room? That, based on the recent meeting and, and other feedback, do we have that feeling on anything? And that, can we just do a quick sense on that?
All right, I'll start out as a senior member. I don't, I don't see that we need to do this. I think the, the goals kind of set forth as to what a lot of our discussion from the last time. And I really don't see that we need to do anything further than improving the goals at this point.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, I think a restatement of some of the concerns we had is, is fine to the purpose of documenting them. I saw some of, felt that some of the goals going forward still were broad in their definition, and I'm not sure captured solutions toward remedying some of the things. So I'm more toward making sure that the 2025 goals address the issue, but they need to state quickly what, what it is we want, want to capture.
Bob and Pam? So kind of a yes or no question at this point?
Good. There was, there was a couple of items, I think, on the, we, we discussed overtime specifically in the schedule. I think there's some, there were some issues there that we brought up. So that, that was one for sure.
Pam?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that there were clearly areas in each of the segments that, you know, we, we had some feedback that we wanted to see some improvement and some things change. So I guess the way I'm reading what you've said, Dave, is that it's, it's not really optional. It's if, if we want to make sure that our feedback is clear, then are, we are required to put that into writing.
Yes, that is what, I mean, I'm just going straight out of what the sentence says that we're obligated to follow. And then
Yeah, so I, I think, I think it's nothing different than what we've already stated. It's it's just formal, it's just formalizing it.
Formalizing it into a written, of those items that would fall under this category, it would be a question of a, a quick editing and formalizing it into a list that's written at this point.
So just, just one clarification for me. So we went through on the 27th feedback, areas for improvement. But Dave, I think where you're, you kind of set the stage, if you now, I'm just kind of looking at your point. We will create meeting minutes from the 27th. But the section that Dave's referring to, if there are specific areas that are unsatisfactory, which is different than needing improvement, that's the question on the table.
Correct. And, and, you know, so I, I think I've heard four members say that there is stuff that's less than satisfactory and that therefore it would trigger this and we would write them down. And it doesn't have to be belabored, but, you know, otherwise it's like we haven't done it. If we haven't done it, we haven't done it. So I, I, I think that's where we are. And, you know, in, in the interest of transparency, you know, I had a, I had an interaction with Greg two days ago about this and, you know, proposed some, some language and then just, we decided to just wait till the meeting, meaning what, what this list could be, and to, to actually talk it through in the meeting. And I actually also had a call with Chris Pollard, who, who also, you know, said that one approach was to simply voice the things in the meeting, and that becomes, or it can be rendered into the list that meets that sentence.
Pam, do you, you want to offer some additional input, Pam?
In the context of
Process. So here's a suggestion, here's a suggestion, Dave. A suggestion would be to create that list, so finish the minutes from that meeting, and then from that meeting, somebody could synthesize those into this document that you want to create. That's a suggestion.
Yep, it's a good, it's, unfortunately, and it's another learning about, you know, about things, is that the contract is silent about how this gets done. It doesn't say, oh, just take minutes from a meeting and somebody edits it, and it doesn't say, you know, talk it through in the meeting. It doesn't say form a, you know, a hire a consultant or form a, you know, committee. It, it just says produce the list. So I, I, I think also in the interest of time, it's, it should be possible to just voice what these are that are distilled. And I can, I could propose, and Bob mentioned OT, I could start with that one and see if this one would rise to that and what, what the concern would be. And so I would like to do that now on that one and just see if we agree that that is, would be on a written list is
I, I, I want to get this done as quickly as possible. So if we're now going to wait for someone to synthesize the list out of the 27th meetings and come back and review the list, that to me, that's just pushing you down the road.
Yeah, and I mean,
I appreciate your willingness to go through this, what you might be, again. But, but I think to meet our requirement and extract at, at this meeting and come to this specific consensus that we're
Okay, let's do it. We got stuff to do, so.
Yeah, we got other stuff.
Let's move on, and we, we're gonna have a busy meeting on the, on the 26th. So I, I'm, I'm going to start with the OT one of, this would be what the written list would say. It would have this one, and it would say that, under the 2024 GM goals of team personnel, goal F was to complete the transition to the new work schedule. And this transition with respect to the line crew appears to have led to sharp increases in planned OT as opposed to unplanned OT from storms or outages. The implementation of a 410s work week created many new OT shifts to cover contract labor on the fifth day. And we had cautioned that this could lead to more OT. Indeed, in summer of 2024, the Board of Concern Express, Board of Commissioners expressed concern to the GM over this high OT, but the trend continued throughout the rest of the year. Now, just for the context, the numbers we're talking about, the planned OT for the line department and supervisors from 2018 through 2022 was always in the 400,000s. It crept up a little bit each year, but it was always in the 400,000s. In 2023, it was 722,000, and then in 2024, it was 1.1 million. So that, that is what, that is what would be less than satisfactory, that the implementation led to this and that it was not addressed quickly. So that would be the less than satisfactory performance feedback. Does, do we have a consensus in the room that that would be one?
Yeah, that's one we'll need to look at going forward, for sure.
Yeah, okay. So actually, can we take a vote? Just, do people agree that this is one of the less than satisfactory performance concerns? I, I render that as a motion, and what?
You, you read a whole thing. Are we voting on that whole thing you just?
Well, we're, we, we, yeah, you are. You're voting on whether
You know, I, I, I object to this because we have not seen this in place. You know, I have not seen this advance. I'm not, you know,
Okay.
the wording or anything like this. I mean, this is, this is, this is, you know, uncalled for. Do this without, putting this in front of us in advance.
Okay.
We should go back and
I, I, I had, I had a meeting with, with Greg about this two weeks, two days ago with this very list, and the decision was made.
You're the chair. You could have, you could have presented this anyway.
Yeah, well, I, I made the decision. It's on the agenda. I know you object, Phil. I know you object, but I'm just, we're gonna keep going, and this is very simply presented. We've been over this many times, and I don't want to just keep kicking it down the road and, and just talking about how we haven't done the right thing. I mean, we're trying to do a list here. So that was, that's the narrative. That would be what's on the list. It's very straightforward.
It's not straightforward. You've got a lot of wording there.
Well, then I'll send this, I'll send it around right now. We can just put it, let's put it on the screen.
Dave, do you, do you want to do the topics or?
Yeah, I mean, the topic, the topic one.
Why don't you do the, why don't we just try and agree to the topics?
Yeah.
And then they can, and then they can circulate a document. That seems like a logical thing for tonight.
That makes sense.
Okay, so the topics would be, would be the overtime going high because of the scheduling change. The second topic would be the various ways that customer communications, we, there were issues with customer communications throughout the year, and the third one would be about project management around in-territory generation that that needs improvement in terms of, not, not to knock the ambition, but to say the less than satisfactory is going so far with something that's
Does carbon capture fuel cell, Dave?
Yes, and the, and the fourth one would be the various goals under personnel and team growth as listed last year were not, were not met, and wanting to make sure that those, those types of things are, are you know, remediated in the future and that we build them into these goals. So those are the four topics. I guess, you know, I, I, what I don't want to, what I don't want to do is have us just continually get derailed. We, we meet, you know, we don't meet very often trying to do things that are, that are, it's just can be hard to do things. We're supposed to do this.
Yeah, so, so David, you've, that, that's the list, and I'm okay with the list. You've conveyed the substance of, the substance behind that to Greg, right?
Yes, I did too. He has, he has the thing I'm looking at right now already.
He has the substance behind that. I don't think we need to read it.
Okay.
If, if we have consensus that these are the topics we want to address, I'm, I'm good with that list, and if we want to get a consensus that that, that constitutes the extent of the list, I'm, I'm good with that. And let's get on to goals.
Okay, so are those, do we have, let's have, I would like us to vote on whether those four items constitute areas that were less than satisfactory. A move, move that the four items just mentioned are deemed less than satisfactory by the board.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
I don't think three is, is one of the topics should be in there.
Okay, meaning the one about the in-territory generation?
There was, there was a project that was discontinued, so I don't really think that should be in there.
Okay, that's a fair point. I think the, 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 if I, if I was, if we were allowing ourselves to have five to 10 minutes, five minutes discussion on each, the critique isn't about that, that we have, you know, an ambitious idea that we're trying to, to pursue. It's more about the, the level to which we went, for lack of a better word, out, out on a limb and spent so much time, effort and, and resources on it when there were so many things that could have, you know, nipped it in the bud earlier because there was about six different things.
You can turn that around and say the board should also be sorry for that too, for allowing it to happen.
Well, yeah, I guess
The board didn't ultimately engage in that process, and it was through the board's participation that some of the weaknesses of it. I, I think it's not so much that it was carbon capture fuel cell, but it was that we didn't really have a, I think, a good project management discipline around the development project.
That's the critique. That is what
To me, the critique more than, because I think we need to do innovative things, and carbon capture fuel cell may still come up as a, as a thing to do.
Right.
So
So the topic should be project, discipline, process.
Yeah, yeah, we need, we, you know, the, the process needs, needs work with major in-territory generation projects.
We've got a lot of other interesting things going on, and we should be sure that we have a good process to evaluate the success of it.
I'm still voting against the whole thing anyway, on the story.
Okay, well, I mean,
So I, so I was just gonna, I was just gonna add that, you know, I, I, I can see Phil's argument, and I can see the point around, you know, this is we, you know, one of the first big in-territory generation efforts we went after. We don't, we don't want to set the precedent that we aren't willing to explore big, bold things. Certainly, there are things that we should improve about the process, but you know, if, if we want to just keep one, one, two, and four, and, and drop three, I would support that.
Okay, then, do we have consensus on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we, we're left with three, and just to give a little bit more on each, it's, and not belaboring it, is that the, you know, we did have a goal of, under customers, to revamp rmld.com and mobile website and plan for mobile app and expand customer communication. But there were, those things did not occur. Plus, we had errors on the website. We were continuing to promote solar choice. We had tread the peak emails not going out, and that wasn't fixed quickly. We had the overcharging for the 50% renewable choice even after we went to 55. And that really, and also that these things weren't detected internally, it appears. It was brought to us by outside people or ourselves, so that also raised a question about internal processes. And one indicator of this was that the $3 million energy efficiency budget was underspent by a million dollars. So, you know, it's, it's, you can't, that's customer behavior, but it's an indicator of communications not being what they might be. Because then it would be more fully spent. So that would be what that would say, and there could be actions associated with the, with this one and the others. So, you know, because we're supposed to do a list, but also actions. And so, but why don't we finish the motion? We have a motion in a second. We've deleted number three, so we have three left. And the one on the personnel is that there were team personnel goals, upgrade leadership team, broaden intern co-op program, transition to new work schedule, and test semi-annual performance review, and, and those, you know, the, there were a number of leadership vacancies during the year. The co-op program was ended, the transition to the work schedule helped drive the high OT, and then the semi-annual reviews, you know, didn't occur. So you know, the, the action, we can go into actions, but those are the three that we've agreed on. So can we vote to say that those are the areas that we say were less than satisfactory and put on a list at this point? I mean, I think we have a motion in a second, so all in favor?
The question, sorry, put a motion. Is it just the topic titles, or do you want other content in that?
Well, I think it's I think it's the topics, and then, and then it has to be rendered into, and sure, that those are the topic areas as described in the meeting. You know.
The substance of which has been conveyed by the chair to the GM.
Yeah, or I can just, I can boil this down and send it in writing, because it has to be in writing, you know. Unfortunately, the contract says what it says. We meet and we talk, but we have to produce a document. So what I'll do
We've agreed that this meeting is captured and represent that documentation.
Okay. So, yeah, and what I'm gonna do, because just so that there's no, no confusion later, I am gonna send in the meeting what the boil down of this is on these three items. And, and, and it'll go to all of you, because I don't know how else to do this. So I would say, let's take a vote.
Our process, Dave, would be to send it to me, and I'll forward it to the board.
Okay, well, but we are in the meeting, so that's a little different. I'm not breaking open meeting law when we're in the meeting.
No, not right now, yeah, no.
That's all. I mean, but I mean, I think in this case, given that we're in the meeting, we could do, I mean, it would take me five seconds.
You got your three topics. Let's go.
Okay, so, so all in favor of that?
Great quarter, aye.
Pam Daskalakis, aye.
Bob Gold, aye.
Mr. Spassino, no.
Okay, Talbot, aye. Okay, so it passes four, one. Now, should we quickly just talk about what the actions would be? Because we're also required to state what the actions would be, not just this, here's what we're complaining about. So we could quickly talk about what the actions would be on the three. One idea would be the, as to OT, is that in, in the first quarter, report how this is just opening it up, when and how the contractor and scheduling arrangements have been changed to correct this specific driver of planned OT. And then describe how your goal of implementing productivity metrics would, would reduce labor and OT costs, and give us relevant monthly updates. Anybody else have actions to suggest on, on the OT piece?
I, I, I think Greg did detail that in the last meeting, so I think that would be the appropriate action.
So I've checked that box already, Bob?
I, I, Greg, you, you, yeah, I believe you, you presented some, some details on how, how you were going to do that.
Correct.
So I guess maybe just
But I guess the, the, the point there is that then those results have to show in the actuals going down. Right, so that, so those are the
Are you saying, Pam, that the actuals need to go down? Is that what the board's telling me to do? Is, that's a, that's an important question.
I mean,
No, it's, it, it, it's, it's not, we don't you're, you're in charge of the
Exactly right.
Yep.
So if you want to report, I've given you actions, and you want to report, you got a monthly report already, but I'll just highlight it. And I will, so I, I think we basically checked that box, Dave.
I, I'm not sure I follow, because I mean, we're getting on the details. What, and what, what do you mean you've checked the box?
You asked for what actions I have been taking. I delivered those at the executive session on the 27th. That's what Bob was referring to. You're asking for a monthly report? You guys all get a monthly report? Whoever, I shouldn't say that. You guys get a monthly report of what we're doing. It's a monthly report. It's every two weeks, actually, whoever's doing payroll. It's also a line item on the financials you guys get as well, each month. But I can, I can highlight them separately if that's it. What I, what I heard is you are not mandating me to increase, decrease overtime hours. That's my responsibility as the GM. That's what I'm hearing. Correct, Bob?
Greg, it's your, it's your, it's your prerogative, right? We, we can't, you know, obviously, we pointed out where we're seeing a trend and, and a direction that we don't like, and your, your responsibility to take, do, do course of action
To manage it to the best of the RMLD, correct?
Yeah, I, I think we understand that there will be overtime. It's just that when it's two or three times this past
Be very careful when they're saying two or three times. So you, you should, before you go any further, you should look at what we presented on the 27th. I know you guys were distracted on other topics. And we did talk in public session in terms of some of the results of that overtime and how we think about it. And we also talked that we are in the middle of, of contract negotiations where that is also part of the topic. So I think for this discussion, just to protect you guys, you should leave it where it is. I'm giving you advice.
Yeah, I, I hear that, and, and we would be we have ways to monitor it, and it's, and I will be monitoring going forward.
Okay, so then on the on the, on the customer-facing stuff, the actions that we're supposed to come up with is open that one up. But, but I don't know if anybody has thoughts on what are the actions? We had all these issues with customer communications that I enumerated before. Anybody speak to what those actions might be?
So H under customers is enhanced customer communications. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, but now we have a new communications person, marketing person, that will help in that.
And we're
So I, I think here from, through Greg, the progress that the marketing person is making in, in improving the website and customer outreach.
We, we are scheduled to do, we have to confirm it, but currently we're planning to do a communications update in March. I'll say a marketing and communications update in March.
And I, I would add to that, you know, that within the 2025 goals, ensure that, you know, in the beginning of the year, that the, the site is completely accurate and updated, and that billing is all accurate and promotes programs fully. Ensure timely and sensible communications for shed the peak. You know, measure and report to the board indicators of improved engagement, such as increased uptake of the energy efficiency budget.
I'm with you on all of the last item. But we'll report to you on the energy efficiency budget on a regular basis. Not a problem.
Okay.
That's actually, that's actually, we already incorporated those into the goals. Those are I and J. I know we're focusing on feedback 2025, but Ray wants to make sure that the feedback got into the goals, and they're there.
Yeah.
Okay, what's the last one, Dave? Go ahead.
Last one was, you know, so we listed the things about the personnel and team that, that was spoken to a little while ago. So this would be, you know, anybody want to speak to what the actions would be there about those personnel-related things that were, were mentioned?
Well, I think, you know, my, my sense was that we had, we had some team building issues. I think C attempts to address that, increased management team training, skills, leadership teamwork. I think that was, you know, some of the issues that came out of our speaking with employees was communication to the team was kind of in the hallway and, and not well articulated, didn't know what to do, lacked direction, had a lot of turnover. I, I think we've got a team now that, my understanding is that we're happy with, so I, I would, I would say that the, the statement have have a data quarterly updates in terms of team status and training and feedback from team leaders that their that their teams are functioning well would, would be the way to point out on that.
So Ray, I, I'm, I'm aligned with the, the sentiment of what you're, you're looking to do. I, my recommendation is, and I think we did this in the past. I seem to recall maybe one of my first meetings or two, we, we talked about the engagement survey. I think we need to bring that back. I think, you know, hallway conversation and all those things are, you know, it is what it is. It's, it's, it's never really consistent, and it's not the full scope of the team. I'd really, I'd really like to see a, you know, us really doing it annual, and oftentimes it's annual with a pulse check halfway through the year on engagement, so we can really formally and anonymously and appropriately capture the organization's feedback and, and have that part of kind of our annual
Talking about an employee survey?
Yep, an employee engagement survey.
And perform
And I'm pretty, am I right that we did that in the past? I, I feel like I recall that we did that.
Yeah, we did it.
Yeah, that was
I think we should bring that back.
Yeah, we've been, we, we, that's even back to the error of calling, but we wanted to do an engagement survey. We kind of started, stopped.
Perform annual anonymous employee survey, employee. Is that what it is?
It's an employee engagement survey. It's an industry term. It's very common. It, that, I, it's not just a survey monkey, right? And you got, Greg, Greg knows this. It, it's an employee engagement survey.
Okay, perform annual anonymous employee engagement survey.
Oh, we're gonna say employee engagement survey, Dave.
Okay, you, you don't want to have it be anonymous?
Well, that probably will be, but it depends upon how we stretch it. We'll get some input and allow somebody to run it for us.
It's an industry term, so
It's very, very typical to do it anonymous.
Yeah, I think it's important for us to be specific about this, because people are gonna answer one way when they know that they're, everybody knows who said it. It can be a little more relaxed when their job isn't on the line.
Yeah, and, and you have to be very careful in small organizations. You know, it's not, you're not multi-thousands of people, you know, so identifying your group and things like that. It, it, you have to structure one for a small organization properly.
Yeah, that's, that'll be tailored for us. Yeah, we're a small group. So duly noted, annual ser, annual employee engagement survey.
Okay, and, and, and so you're, you're, you're asking Okay, and, and, and so you're, you're, you're asking us to not ask it to be anonymous?
You could do what you like, Dave. I don't recommend it.
Uh, I'm just.
I'm, I'm not, I'm recommending you don't put it in the requirement because we'll take guidance from people that know how to do it for our size. You're, and I, so that's all I'm saying. You want to put it in, you can put it in.
I mean, it was, Pam, Pam made the suggestion. I'm, I'm just taking notes at this point.
Pam, who said employee engagement survey, yes?
Yep.
Pam, how should it be worded, any of you?
I mean, to me, uh, anonymous is the, the approach that I've always seen and is very standard, so I would, I would be very curious as to why we wouldn't do it. For sure, I agree with what Bob is saying in terms of, you know, typically you wouldn't report on a team unless the team is at least a size of nine or 10. So you anonymize the feedback and the, and the ratings, et cetera. That is all very standard for an employee engagement survey, so. You know, if, if, if we went, if we went and selected a partner who was going to go do it non-anonymously, I would not vote for that as, to approve that contract. So just, it, it feels like, uh, you know, we're, we're saying the same thing twice, but if we want to be really specific, if there's a, a concern or if there's a debate about whether it should be anonymous or not, then I think we need to note that it's appropriately anonymous.
It means for me.
Okay, I'd like to share because, because I now have a short version of this. Excuse me. And then, and let's just look at it. It's like 400 words or something, 500 words.
I object to you sharing this, Dave. I object to you sharing this.
Uh, we just talked about all this, Phil.
I object, it was not part of the agenda here.
Um, yes, it was. Just talked about every aspect of this.
Yep, that's fine.
I object to this, we are sharing.
Okay, we can take a vote to object and we'll put it right to the commissioners in order to view this document.
Well, it's on the screen, right?
It is.
Okay, so this is what we've just been talking about. And these are just the things that have just been spoken in the meeting. All of this is what we just spoke about. And we already voted to approve these three items. Okay, and we've talked about all these things. The question now, the challenge I have, which is a very big challenge, is given that the contract does not say how to do this and we have four different opinions about how to do it, is, well, we have a list now that we've, what I've avoided is putting something in the board book that wasn't approved and that might not be something everybody would approve of. But now we have something that we have all kind of coalesced around, which I think makes this a good moment to say, okay, is this what we just said? I mean, I don't know how else to do this.
This is appropriate time to do this. I think we've selected the topics, we've selected the topics.
Yep.
Then we should, you know, you need to put something together for the next meeting.
And the suggestion would be you'd probably edit this, um, legal counsel advice was to edit this in the executive set.
Yeah.
Well, but it, okay, each one of these is what, things that have already been said in, in the meeting. So nothing here is not something that we already, we just said all these things in the meeting. I just want to be clear about that. This is not some document and, and performance reviews are done in public session, not in executive session.
No disagreement with that, but that's not what we're doing. Okay, so scroll down, please.
Well, performance feedback about is, is, is public, so.
Oh, this is all good for me, Dave. This is, this is really, this is great.
How so?
Just, I'm just reading through it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a bit hard to see on our end, Dave.
I'm sure the two drive, you can't read it either.
So the first paragraph just says what the contract says. And this, this is, assuming we approve it, this is what this would say. Okay. This just states what I read.
I, I, I would approve the communication of this to Greg as, as our feedback. I, I wouldn't be voting on this language specifically. I, I think we agreed to the topics. We've discussed the goals and how the areas of concern are handled within that. We've asked for some specifics. I, I think if we're happy with the specifics, then, um, we could approve the goals as discussed and, and. Well, I, I'm all for communicating this to the GM. That's, Dave, I'm not, I'm saying not communicated. Um, if this is all we've said, then, but as far as voting, it's the three topics, we, the language of the three topics, this is subsidiary to that. And we talked about feedback and goals, so I think that if, unless there's
And we have the meeting minutes.
We have the meeting minutes. Unless there's, there's an issue that someone else has beyond that, um.
Okay, well, I just anticipate challenges that this isn't, if I send this, I'll, I'll stop sharing. I, I, I see it coming that there'll be challenges that the specific sentence wasn't what was said in the meeting. We have to approve a written list.
Yep.
So we have like a 500 word document right here that is what we just said. It, it, we have to, we have to not just assemble minutes. We have to, have to give a list and a list of actions. I'm just going by what it says we have to do.
And you, and you're transmitting that list, so I'm good with that.
Okay, well, but there's detail in there that are going to be debated. I know, I know that that will happen. Uh, so I really want us to look at this. Uh, I'd like us, I'm sorry, but I want to have the, I'm going to send this document and I want us to spend 10 minutes reading it and I want us to vote on it. Because otherwise we didn't do it. We just said a bunch of stuff in, in minutes. So, um, and somebody can tell me I'm doing it wrong and they surely will, uh, and.
I'm, Dave, I'm not going to tell you you're doing it wrong, but if we, we voted on the three topics.
Yeah.
What if we take another vote that says the board agrees that, you know, we will, like, I don't know how the, the right way to do it either, but we will review this and provide feedback and finalize that list, you know, by our next meeting or something like that, that just formalizes that it wasn't just a discussion. It was, these are the three topics that will go into writing. We're going to, uh, adjust the verbiage, but it's, it will be our written feedback.
Is it deliberation if we just give feedback to you, David?
Yeah, we can't do that offline. You, you can't all send stuff to me offline and have me edit stuff, you know, outside of the meeting. So it has to be, that's why we have these meetings and it's not easy to do.
We'll go back to all, we just go back to you as our individual feedbacks, so there wouldn't be debate on it.
Yeah, I don't think you can do that.
No, that, that's online, that's online collaboration.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't, it has to be open and, open and in public. The only, the only thing I.
Do what Pam has suggested, you know?
What is that exactly?
Yeah, Pam, repeat what, repeat your, what you, your motion.
What I, what I would say, what I was intending to say is that we would do another vote that confirms that the, those three topics are the board's written feedback and we will, uh, finalize the exact language to go into, you know, into the communication to Greg, you know, within a week's time and, or ahead of the next meeting.
Okay, well, it was, I like the, within a week because we can have a fi- a five minute meeting in, on Monday just to say, yep, this is the list. This is the document.
I doubt it'll be a five minute meeting.
We're not open on Monday.
I'm sorry, Tuesday. You know?
Monday's a holiday.
Okay. Why don't we do, why don't, why don't we do a 10 minute meeting on Tuesday or Wednesday? And just say, I'll eat, and then I'll send this around and.
I don't know if we want another meeting because I'm not, um, I'm not sure I'm around next week.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want another meeting either. That's why I'd like us to.
If it's only, if it's only just finalize it throughout the top of the agenda, the 26th, and just all in favor, I, and be done with it. Yeah, it should be the 26th. I'm not even available next week. I can tell you that right now. I've already booked the whole week.
Okay.
We'll be available.
We've spent, let me just, let me just, I, I, I beg your, your, uh, your consideration that we've spent five to 10 minutes just talking about how to approve this. Why don't we just, why don't we just spend five minutes reading what, I'll send it, spend 10 minutes reading it and we vote on it. And if you have changes, we can make them in 10 minutes. Then that just.
We, we should, I agree with Pam, you know, with her motion that she's, she's ready to make. Then we can meet again.
Do it at the beginning of 26th.
What?
Do it at the beginning of 26th.
Beginning of 26th.
Yeah, do it beginning to 26th. I mean, it's only, it's only a couple of weeks away, Dave, you know?
Two weeks.
You know?
And, and the other thing, I think, Dave, the other, the other concern I heard was that, you know, now we're going to go to talk about goals and we need this documented before we talked about the goals. But we have talked through it all to your point, so I think the question is not whether these three things should be on the list or whether the actions that we just talked about should be on the list. It's, it's just comfort with the specific language that goes into the communication and we, we now can take what we've just discussed as we look at the 2025 goals and look to approve those.
Okay.
So I don't think, I don't think we lose that benefit.
How are we finalizing the written lists and giving it to Greg? Because the contract says we have to give him a writ list in writing, okay? And that's what it says. I mean, it says what it says. I, I don't want it to say that. I wish it just.
No, I recognize that. I just, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out a, a solution that everybody is, is comfortable with. And I think what we're saying is we've, we have identified the topics. We can vote on a motion to, uh, confirm that we all agree this is going to, these are the topics that are going into a written document. And then it is the, you know, everybody gets a chance to read through it offline, brings their changes and we vote on it at the top of the meeting on the 26th.
So Pam, are you making that motion? Are you making that motion, Pam?
Uh, yes, I can make that motion.
So I, I will second that motion.
Okay, so we can vote on that. So what am I doing right now? Am I emailing what I've just compiled and emailing it to the group now?
Send it to Greg so he can get it, get it to all of them. Correct. I think that's the best way to do it.
They make whatever additional edits tonight after our meeting, sending tomorrow, then I'll get it to the group.
Um, yeah, I mean, I already did it, so I just want to send it to the group now.
It's time to get it to the group now since we're in session, can?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, send it to the group.
I'll send it to the group now, okay.
Send it to Erica and she can get it to us.
It's fine. It's, we're, I can do, because we're in the meeting. Move on to the goals, yeah.
Get the pony express, all right, love.
But wait, don't we get to vote? Let's vote, we get, we need to vote. Pam, Pam voted to say we agree on this. Yeah.
Yeah, I made the motion. Uh, Phil seconded the motion. Can you guys vote?
My quarter, I.
Yeah, Mr. Spassino, I.
Okay.
Pam Daskalakis, I.
Yeah, uh, can you just tell me what the motion was, please?
It's a circulated document for us to review and we provide comments on the 26th.
Okay, document on pursuant to section 4.5 of areas of performance that were less than satisfactory and recommended actions. I just want it to be what it says in the contract.
Okay.
Would, can I, can that be a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Accept that as part of the main motion, Dave.
Okay, fine, then I, I, and we move on. I'm gonna email it shortly.
Second, the motion is amended and reports. It's a main motion, so it doesn't, it doesn't need to be amended.
All right, thank you. This is very challenging to do. Thank you, everybody. I'm just trying to have us do our jobs. It's not easy and I did, it wasn't pleasant to try to get it done, but I felt like we had to do it, so thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
And I do it for the money is what we're doing here.
Yep, thank you.
And three.
And three. Now we have discussion, move the RMLD board commission approve the general managers 2025 goals as presented related to vision, team slash personnel, customers, platform, funding and profit supply.
Um, all right, well, but now we discuss though, because, um, a lot of these feel like they need some specificity to them. Maybe we're all just, uh, kind of done, right?
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, sorry, it took me a sec, it took me a second. Um, so, yeah, I, I think, and I, I know I've said this before, so, so I'm sure Greg knows what I'm going to say. I think it's great that we've added in, you know, time bound elements to these goals for, you know, a number of these, you know, it's, it's really hard for me to understand how we measure success. You know, things like refine, further engage, increase. Um, those are hard to measure like by how much and what does refine mean and like those items, the things that say like you're going to complete this specific activity by this date, that's great. That works. Um, I think the, like, you know, the vision one probably needs a little bit of work to really understand um, what that is. And then I think the team and personnel, you know, I would, I would add in what we just talked about in terms of the engagement survey and getting that done. But the training and the productivity metrics in particular feel like, you know, what, what specific skills? Well, how much training are they going to go through? Is it a certain number of hours that we're measuring? Yeah, I just, I would love to hear Greg from your perspective, how can we actually measure those things and what were this, what is the, what are the measurable goals there?
Well, so regarding vision, the strategic plan, I think we've discussed, that's pretty clear. I don't, you know, if you want to have something specific deliverable, um, we'll have on the fourth quarter a formal review and approval of the strategic plan. Um, further engage commonwealth and regulatory, um, we can delete that one as a goal. Um, I'm going to be doing that because that's critical. Uh, that's why.
Well, I, I, I'm not saying that we should delete it. I guess I'm just trying to understand how do we measure that that is done? Like, is that, is it just meetings? Is it, is it, you know, we're going to identify one joint objective and get that done? You know, I, I'm just trying to understand what is that? You know, you're going to spend time on it. What do we?
Yeah, what are, what are the, what are, what are the policy goals and what are the, what are the changes or something that we're looking for? I mean.
Yeah, it, it ultimately it goes, it's what are the results that we're looking for with that particular goal if you're going to spend time on it? That's, that's just my question on, on a few of these.
Yeah, no, I hear you, Pam. Um, and as an engineer, that's how I think, right? What's the, what's the outcome? These are, you know, um, you know, saying we're at X number of meetings, you know, we're, we're, we're having those meetings, we're doing that stuff. It's, the, the goal here is to get engagement with these individuals to adjust their thinking about the speed of decarbonization, about their use of, of natural gas as a resource, about they're willing to fund innovative projects with us. None of those, you know, if they don't happen, I mean, you know, we, we don't have control over what the, the regulatory legislators do.
Sure.
But we, but our, our goal is to influence what they do and we have not, up until a year ago, we have, we as RMLD were not very active, at least not recently. So on those two, I, I don't think I'd put specific pieces on those two. On the, you know, the rest of them, as you noted, Pam, right, there was complete, there was close. There, um, you know, pursue grant funding, okay? You can say we have to do five grant applications or something like that, but that's not, I, I think the core of this, back to your comment, what we did based on your feedback was do these action items by these dates. Not every one of them has that. Um, but the, the vast majority of them, over two thirds of them are, are complete and have a date next to them. So from that perspective.
Yeah, and that's the time bound element of a SMART goal, right? But specific and measurable are the first two things and it's, that's, it's just the measurable piece that I'm trying to understand.
Well, that's, so like, that's an answer for A, B, but you take everyone, but B, complete AMI, so take M, right? Complete phase one, right? That's measurable, specific.
Yeah, for sure. Uh, no, I know, and I didn't, I didn't bring that one up. I, I brought up the ones like, um, again, further engage or increase training, like, you know, what does that mean? Increase from what, you know, by, is it, are you going to measure it by number of hours? Is it a certain number of, uh, is it a certain skill set that you want to, you know, that?
I got it. All right, so, so we'll do at least 10 hours of leadership training in the course of, uh, 2025. I mean, I could put those in there, um, but I'm going to exceed whatever we put down there, but I hear you. Um, I look at management team training as an ongoing piece, so one of the things that we have been doing since last, early last year, part of our, part of our team meetings are also training meetings. How does a business work? Part of it is, you know, as we talked, I talked with, I can't remember who of you, but the key productivity metrics, we're putting those together. the key productivity metrics, we're putting those together now, and those are gonna be critical relative to the organization. And that's why it's got two Q twenty five next to it. I don't know what all those metrics are. I know what many of them are gonna be. Um, but I it's gonna be a team effort to have us as an organization pursue those. Those are management metrics in terms of productivity. They talk about things like overtime. They talk about things in terms of jobs done. I don't know what those look like, but I, you know, it says here, implement key productivity metrics. If you want me to say input, implement five or ten or twenty key productivity metrics, put ten down. I I understand what you're saying, Pam. Um, but these are corporate goals, right? This isn't what this is Greg's gonna drive the organization to do this. So this isn't, um, so anyways, you wanna we wanna, if you want me to go, I'll, thank goodness gracious, I can go back and and put another level of detail behind it, but this, I think I said it. There's the majority of these have specific actionable items with specific dates. Um, if you want me to go back and put more detail behind them, I'll do that, if that's what you want me to do. Just you guys can both say.
This is one this is one person's this is one person's opinion and feedback, and and I and I hope that, you know, it's recognized that it's consistent with, you know, what uh uh other feedback at other times that I've been sharing. I I think it's I think it's important not only for for you, but also for the organization to understand what does good look like? What's the goal here? And, you know, so I I think if you say, you know, yeah, something like on average, every member of the management team is gonna have at least ten hours of formal training in an identified skill. That's great. That's that's if that's in it, if you can confirm, if if that's increasing, excellent. I I I love that. It's measurable. It's specific. It's it's attainable. It's clear. Um, I think the, you know, another example, again, not every one of these goals, but another example is enhance customer communication. Okay, what does enhance mean? You know, what what is what is the result?
Yeah, and I think that's that actually is a good one, Pam, in terms of how you how you ma how you measure that. And that's part of the those metrics are part of already part of the um, business metrics. Um, and the marketing.
Are those the productivity? Are those the productivity metrics or are they different?
I shouldn't say business metrics, but the productivity was tied to labor hours spent more than anything.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the key product, I'm I'm envisioning a dashboard uh for the organization. Um, and there have been many attempts at making one, but we need to make a legitimate one. So the, you know, don't misunderstand my um, my comments of being um, not wanting to put specifics in. Um, as you get deeper into the organization, become more and more specific. So those metrics are gonna be ones that we look at um, literally every week or every month, depending on what the metrics are. Um,
Okay, so I guess I guess the other the alternative here.
Yeah.
Yeah, the alternative to going back, because I, you know, I I I want us all to move forward, so I I'm not trying to slow this process down. Um, you know, i- in the areas where it's not a s- a specific, like you're closing something out or completing something where it's increase or enhance or further refine or further engage, what would be helpful to me is understanding what is the baseline? You know, what what are how are we going to measure that? And what was it last year? And so that at the end of the year, we can measure that, yes, it was increased, or yes, it was enhanced, or yes, there was further engagement beyond, you know, what had been done before. So that 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 might be an approach to address some of those questions without slowing us down.
So let's so let's like, so most of these are complete, right? And then and you guys are focused on a few. All right. Um, so in in terms of increasing management training, um, uh, I, uh, so I I my recommendation is to leave that as it is, but I'll report back that we're going, I'll report back whatever on a semi annual basis in terms of the formal training we've done. Um, in terms of enhance, that's the other one that that people have heartburn over. Um, what we will do is create some set of metrics that we'll report on. Number of webinars held is one thing that we used to do, right? Um, you know, we have an open rate of over fifty percent in terms of our newsletter. Um, you know, and that's a huge number. And so I have all the all the different metrics on those, but there are things.
And I and I'm not, yeah, my suggestion is not that you 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 do all those right now. I think that's that's kind of the the baseline conversation is, and I think that can be a future conversation.
Yeah, um, I think the vision needs to stay as it is. Um, the mission that I'm trying to do with the Commonwealth is very clear. Uh, we've shared that many, many times. Um, we want them to fund, there there are two big pieces. We want them to support out of the box uh, ways for us to uh affect their um decarbonization goals. At the same time, we also want them to create funds to help us do that, because we can't do all that on a rate payer. So those are two key pieces in terms of further engage the Commonwealth. And there's the regulatory side and the legislative side. So my suggestion on vision, leave that where it is.
But um, Greg, if I ma if I make a a a comment on that, you know, part part of the role of ISOs and munis is to feedback that, you know, what you're asking, right? Requires a responsible um, in in
Yeah.
response, right? And and part of your role is not to agree, but to point out and 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 not name meaning you specifically, but municipal electrics and ICE in 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 investor own. They have to say, you you wanna do this, but you can't proceed at this pace sometimes, right? You you have to provide that responsible feedback. So I I'm I'm hoping that's part of the messaging.
Yeah, it 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 very much is, Bob. That that is exactly right. Um, in terms of, you know, so it's not just, hey, you can't, you know. Here's the implications of what you're asking us to do. And then the second part of that same meeting, here are some suggestions we have that would allow us to do that, still getting to your ultimate goal, but giving us flexibility in terms of how to do that. And and the carbon capture fuel cell would have been a great example of that, because it would have been a new gas project, again, a whole bunch of ifs. Um, but it would have it would have been uncomfortable for the regulatory guys to let that go through. Now, they agreed to do it in our initial meetings that we had back with it. Um, they weren't gonna fight us on it, but those are those are part of the discussions we have. So you're exactly right. Not only, hey, here are the challenges of what you're trying to do and but also come with them with suggest with solutions and ideas that they might, where they thought about it or not, it's not the point, but I want them to not only encourage, but help enable us to get those done. And we, as RMLD, you know, again, we're a great size and a great mix, because we are a microcosm of the greater Boston area. Anyways, I I think on those two, I hear you. Bob, that's a good point, and it's well taken, but I don't think we put anything specific on vision. Back to Pam's point, C, um, I will.
I I no, I do want to come back to vision.
Okay, then come back to vision.
Um, when we talk about regulatory and legislative teams, there's DOER, there's DPU, there's the regulatory, there's legislated, there's state legislators.
Yep.
And then there's um MEEM and MMA. Uh, those are the
Yep.
Professional professional issues.
Yeah, yeah.
So when we talk about um, engaging those teams, there's some specifics around each of those, because
Yeah.
Uh, MMA and MEEM have a policy in terms of what they want done. And some of what they want done, which you may or may support, I don't know what your opinion is on it, is we're munis, leave us alone, don't touch us. Well, that is, that maybe not your opinion. Um, but as commissioners, we do have input on policy and and what it means to retain some of the decarbonation goals and how quickly we achieve that.
Hmm.
So so while I support you engaging with DOER, DPU, state legislatures, MEEM and and MMA as a active member on the Municipal Light Commissioners Association, which is a
We haven't named it.
We like our voice at the table, too. So.
So so that's exactly what I want to get to.
So that's, so I see and and validate that you may not be able to do a long list of specifics here, but as you talk about those those regulatory, they are specific, they are they are entities. And as you engage in those entities on regulatory um, and policy goals, uh, that is indeed the very thing we want to interact with you on, because we have to we have to guide you and and support you for going the way we want for, not support you, you don't go the way we want.
And those policy discussions, right, are the things that we want to, that's what we want to use our meeting time for.
Right, right, exactly right, exactly right. So so that, so I I just want Pam's talking about specifics, those are some specific groups. And then and then other specifics would be what policy, you mentioned decar, you mentioned funding.
Yep.
Um, and and there's there's a that is also part of the discussion I'm having at the uh, MLCA level, um, which I can bring up at next meeting.
Yep.
Um, so 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 um, so yes, think about that when you're thinking about that. Um,
Yeah, this is this is a critical initiative, right? I mean, this the these two items, so I think the feedback you guys gave me at the meeting, there was a consistent positive feedback that that the vision is clear, right? And that was something that wasn't two and a half years ago. It's very clear. It makes sense. Now we're trying to, what hurdles do we have to get through to make those happen? And that second one is something we put in for the first time last year. I did very aggressively and did a lot. So, you know, they had some heartburn in terms of, well, what happened on the meetings? But we are meeting with a lot of the different agencies, DOER. Anyways, we we want to reinforce our reputation of being, hey, these guys, these guys are trying, these guys, RMLD, we want to burnish that reputation, and not just the reputation, but we're actually doing the stuff that supports what the Commonwealth is trying to do.
Right.
But we also need their help to do it. That's the second piece of it. And we're not just, hey, don't do this, don't do that, leave us alone. We're like, hey, we want to try and solve the problem. But we also want to guide, we 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 want to guide how you guys are are allowing us to solve the problem.
Right, right. Ag- agreed with everything you said, just in terms of Pam's comment about specific, there's there's those groups, those those eight associations.
There's ME, there's APBA, there's ME, there's NEPA, there's MMA.
About what does that mean? It means how to work through those
Yeah.
Those associations to.
Those are means to the end, they're.
Those are basically it, but those are the actions you take to get there, so.
And direct.
And
And direct.
Involve involve the board in achieving those.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I think we're uh, we we got the idea.
Yep, I I'll I'll on C, right? Um, I'll put I'll report back and we'll we'll something, I'll create something that says these are specifics to C. H, um, that's gonna be a moving target in terms of what those metrics look like. The the first one is where are we right now? Right? And the the one thing that we will do this year, which is in here, right, it's item G above, is the customer satisfaction survey. That's gonna be part of it, because remember, all the things we're trying to do here is to serve our rate payers, right? The customer base. So we do that every two years. The last time we did it was uh, springtime of twenty twenty three. So we're gonna do it again uh, before the end of the year. The rest of these, I think, Pam, as I look through these, I'm not sure if you're stable, you're but um, the only other one are, right? It doesn't have a specific. Um, we are literally in the process of doing another grant application. So we're actually through with with John Chalk. Um, an application we put in back in November, right? So that's so that's in motion. We're doing one with Alstom right now. So if you want to say we'll do at least four grant applications, great, we'll do at least four grant applications. We're gonna do more than that.
It's gonna be tough, because uh
I agree. I don't know if you can.
If you need the administration, it's gonna affect some of these grants.
Very likely. Yeah, and I I completely agree with you. So what I'm not signing up for is
Four grants, I mean.
No, I know, I could submit. Yeah, when I say.
Yeah, I think I think what you're saying is you're gonna pursue, not that you can guarantee secure, you know, securing them, totally totally understand. Yeah, and just just as I I think that you captured the right ones. Um, the rest, I agree, are very specific, measurable, time bound. They're they they hit the they hit the mark. So I'm so I'm comfortable with that list that you just listed out, just, you know, understanding the baseline and the objectives in a further discussion.
Okay, here's the thing. Each quarter, present this to us with the updates as to how each of these goals stands going forward, each quarter.
Sure, I'll probably do that between, so I do upgrade, no problem.
Make a difference to me, I'm gone.
Well, thanks, okay.
So we're we're still on vision, right? We're all that.
No.
We're no, we're not.
No, we've done.
We've got through everything, Dave.
All right.
There's one, there's one edit that I that I will make to this tonight, that before I send it to finalize it, you guys are gonna approve or not approve, but I'm gonna create what I'm gonna call E Echo One, which is execute an employee engagement survey.
Yeah, so you
Thank you.
Mononymous, but yeah.
Um, it'll be anonymous, Dave, that's fine. I'm just I'm trying to.
Okay, I I'm sorry, I was I I I've sent that document around. There's one thing here, it's complete a land purchase um, or lease. And I think, and the feedback that the item that we cut out of that list, which is fine, I agree with cutting it out, was that the issue wasn't the ambition on carbon capture fuel cells. It was the end to end project management, and the goal isn't to buy land. The goal is a fully developed project and business case and understanding it and understanding the failure modes and getting us some ways along the road down that. The goal isn't to buy land, per se. So that one.
If you like, are you saying you want to delete that? I don't P is involved?
Well, it's it's more that, you know, um.
He's your ass street that you he's gonna turn, oh, but he's talking about having a not just buy land, but have a plan for the land and a business case and a and a develop, we're building a project. Land is simply a means to an air. It's what we're using the land for and handling it.
Yeah, so you guys know that we have three small projects.
And and it's it's not saying what piece of land.
It's not saying what piece of land, so.
So whatever's land.
So kind of, oh, all right. So that's the one that I, you know, I'll force hard, but if I don't get that done, it won't be for lack of effort. And if you guys next year want to ding me for it, that's fine.
Well, it.
And at the end of the day, we're gonna hustle.
Yeah.
So so now, I won't take time to do it, but you could put that project, well, we deleted, we deleted item three in project management, because I will argue that the carbon capture fuel cell was one of the best planned projects this organization has done in quite some time. Now, Dave, you are not in the meetings, Ray, you are not in the meetings, but Bob was in the meetings, and Vivek was in the meetings, and Pam was in the meetings, and we went through a tremendous amount of detail. And the hustle behind that detail, we we had to step it up when it became apparent that the um, the IRA, right, um, which was forty percent was gonna expire at the end of the year. So yes, we had to run things in parallel. So it's not a lack of planning, right? It was a lack, it was basically how do we possibly get it done? At the end of the day, the commissioners decided primarily primarily for the concern over whether we would get the IRA back. Um, that was the re that was the primary reason why it was canceled.
Yeah, I I just wanna, I I'll just say, I I think I think the goal, in my opinion, is fine. I think that we a- as we think about, obviously, the board has to approve land acquisition at the time.
They sure do.
And I think that, you know, we learned a lot from that process. And, you know, we will ask those same types of questions around, you know, feasibility of what goes on that land and readiness for, you know, development for whatever, you know, a project we think is appropriate, et cetera, as part of that approval process. So
Yep.
Um, you know, in my opinion, it's fine. I don't, you know, if we if if you present land and we decide it's, you know, projects are just not feasible on that property and we aren't able to secure land, well, we're certainly not gonna encourage you to just buy land just to hit a metric, so.
Agreed, okay.
We'll be smart about it.
Yep, I think so too, Pam. I I so I think the only edit that I recommend we make here um, formally or in terms of the text is Echo One, it'll shift all the letters down, but again, complete employee engagement survey, and I'll put it by three Q twenty five. That work for everybody?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that's.
Now, do you want to go down it?
Um, can I ask about number S under power supply?
Yeah. What?
Go ahead.
One quick question. Have we performed one in the past, right? I I I I remember this this, okay, we we did, okay.
Yeah, we did. But we'll probably do it differently this time around.
Yeah, I just I just um, mind me, I I I just don't recall the results because I know that was that was a big to big like prior and that that was a big push that I I wanted to do, I I you know, want wanted wanted to see, I I, you know, believe, like like Pam said, they're just good to have. They're always good, whether it's annual, semi annual. They're always something good to have, because it does give you a pulse of of what's going on. And and it just allows employees to get a chance to feedback um, that information. I know we've tried to launch them before and we go, we 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 get we get lost in the weeds, right? They're pretty straightforward. They're pretty simple. Um, you get them, you get the results.
With a partner, as opposed to trying to do it internally. That's probably why we're into that, Bob.
And and then that's, yep, yep, and that's what I try to, if we can execute that, uh, I I would with the timeline, uh, that that would be wonderful.
And the piece I was gonna mention there, are you are you all set, Bob? I wanted to have another question about something else. You said?
Yeah, go ahead. S S and Sam, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, thank you. So, yeah, um, the, it's great, contract initial RMLD, RMLD on solar. I I would like to add, you know, in- increased customer uptake of the solar, I know you can't control customer behavior fully, but um, you know, in- increased efforts to in in uh, promote customer. you know, in- increase efforts to in in uh promote customer use of the solar incentive and those commercial rooftops, and to to Ray's point where Ray's always talking about area, and I agree with him that we have all this area, parking lots and roofs, that we should be pushing more that those private sites are doing.
All we can do is offer and vote implementations based on economics.
What's what's Jay Phil, I'm sorry?
Under customers, you got Jay. Add possible customer actions to affect their monthly bill on their M L D.
I think it's Jay and the one before it as well, in terms of, you know, customer engagement, you know, I think you talked about number of webinars and you know, increasing communication, that that, that I agree, Bob, is is the key. Making sure everybody understands how to take advantage of it, if it makes sense for them.
Right, yeah, obviously, we can't control what they do. Nobody's gonna hold you responsible for what a a certain customer does or what a town does, but somehow doing more to get the word out that there's this opportunity and that people use it. That's, that's what I was trying to get at.
We need to optimize the program or en- enhance the program to get participation, have be aware of where it's at and its uptake and when you do throw a few dollars on it, then we.
If we can move dollars around, yeah. So with the, with the inclusion of Echo One.
I'm okay to vote.
Okay, so, but unlike the other thing, we're ready to do this now. We don't wanna see the updated version before we vote on it.
Not good with it. I think we've had the discussion. Reporter I.
Miss Pacino, I.
Damn, that's the lack of high.
Bob?
Okay, you guys are good, so am I. I I have faith.
One, one one comment, the, uh, one thing that I'm sorry, but you know, for for next year, right, next goal session, um, we need to spend some time on a a a process on our feedback for the general manager, right? Uh, so so we don't go through this again and again and again, right? So I I think if we, you're gonna present your goals and we do your feedback, uh, you know, at the end of that night, right, either we take, we we needed to find the process, it took an hour and a half, hour and fifteen minutes, right? We don't wanna do this again. We 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 did it before, we already spent two hours on it. We need to come up with a a process that says, once we do your feedback, whether that gets taken immediately.
Lost somebody there. I think we just lost Bob in the middle of his.
The 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 suggestion's good.
I I think I understand his intent, yeah, so let's, instead of having.
Sounds good, even I won't be here.
We'll have, we'll bring Phil back just just for this one thing, cuz he enjoys it so much. Yeah, we should, we should.
Probably to wheel me in.
Yeah, we should have a timeline and a and an understanding of what.
I agree.
We can get through it quickly and easy.
For all of us.
I just wanna, I talked to Greg earlier before about this, it probably falls under platform and the P. Uh, as you know, the uh, the N B T A, the railroad behind this is looking to electrify.
Oh, really? I thought they were just putting a siding in.
Then, well, they put a siding with the idea they can run electric trains.
Is that in like ten years?
I don't know. Yeah, yeah, it's way down the road, Pam, you're exactly right. But planning's being done now, and so we wanna raise our hand to be part of that electrification. Literally right behind us.
Load growth in one fell swoop.
Yeah, well, we won't, we won't get all of it. We'll just, I mean, if we get any, it'll be a small piece of it, but.
Do do we need a liaison or something to a I I don't know exactly what town committee is assessing that, but do we need somebody from RMLD to engage more formally there?
It's a great idea, I heard about it for tonight, Pam, so I'll talk to Matt. And it's not just, it's not just the town, it'll also be with the M B T A. We've got a connection already with M B T on that one through um um men negotiating.
The town is resisting the turnaround because it's going through that park they just did.
That's a, that's a related issue, but.
And also right there by the the Channerville, and even where I live, it's affecting where I live.
Yeah, that's a NIMBY, right? We can, we can affect that zoning, but you can't, you still let the train turn around, right? But but lo- long story short, they're self-powered. The only thing I believe RMLD will be doing in there, if anything, would be providing a secondary connection for um some device for something other than, I I think you're you'll be very limited to any power demand.
Yeah, it sounds like having a connection with the town, just to understand implications if it does move forward, even if it's long-term, is the right thing to do, so.
Vivek's got his hand up, Dave.
Yeah, okay, thanks, guys. Just two comments. One is, I I think I like the idea of a customer survey, but every two years is not good, because I think, you know, it's good to get more frequent input. I I I think it's important to get customer feedback every year, because uh, so that that would be something to think about. And because, cuz a a lot of the goals that we are looking to set here, I think are in the context of customer response, and if you, you know, get customer feedback every year, you have something to work towards. And set goals every year. The second thing is, okay, on be behalf of the cab, I'd like to thank, you know, the management and the commissioners for looking to engage more actively with the cab. And I think the input for the goals for the review uh for the GM is a good example. We were not involved in setting up the goals for twenty twenty-four, so that's why we didn't wanna be involved in the review process, but going forward, we would like to be involved. And one thing I did is, I looked at the thirty, the two thirty-two policies that RMLD has, three of them refer to the cab. There's one reference to the twenty-year agreement, so I think, you know, there's gonna be some so the policies need to be maybe updated a little bit to specify the role of the cab. It'll be helpful to have some mention of the cab in terms of the strategic planning piece. And uh, the engagements, uh, like the goals and all. So I I have some thoughts on that, but I just wanted to be mentioned. Uh, so that, something for the commissioners to think about.
Thank you, Vivek, for saying that. I wholeheartedly agree with you. And I just like to stay, step, take a step back that, you know, at the opening of the meeting, it's 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 rough, you know, because that some of these things aren't defined of how to do them. And um, then I really wish to the to to the spirit of what Vivek is saying that like the contract is clear about how certain things are supposed to be done, that that the policies also are clear about what does the cab do and how does it happen is very important. Um, you know, by the way, in terms of setting goals, love to have the cab there, the the GM's contract does not mention the cab. So it's another place where, okay, if if the cab is to have a role in setting, you know, uh, evaluating or setting goals, then it's not in the contract right now, and that can cut both ways. It could be good for the GM, or it could be a nightmare for the GM. You know, if if the cab suddenly wants to weigh in, but it's not in his contract, I'm just saying, getting back to these documents and having them be clearer on a bunch of things would really help a lot, and I think avoid some of, you know, anyway, that it's a general comment. The same goes true with policies, you know, fifteen and twenty-four, which we've talked about. There's a bunch of things to to clean up, that when you need these things, it's, it can be hard to to know exactly what to do. So anyway, uh, that's a general comment. I don't know if anybody has thoughts, Phil, as you, as the, as the dean of the board. Uh, whether you have thoughts on just how some of these things could be clarified, not tonight, but I I've struggled with it because of the language not being super clear about everything.
So either in the February or probably March, we're going to uh kind of lay out a strategy that you guys will need to approve in terms of the prioritization of updating um key policies. And so Vivek's definitely part of that as well.
Great. But did that, did what I just said make sense, or was it just more Dave blathering on, or was it both? Thanks, okay, it's both, I'll take both.
Was there anything else on the agenda?
No, no, I think we voted, right?
RMLD Board of Commissioners during the regular session.
All right, thank you, everybody, very much.
Thank you.